Thank you. We're convening the Senate Committee on Transportation on our 3:00 PM agenda. We have a number of bills up today, so for the folks joining us, we have our 3:00 PM agenda, which has, I don't know, a dozen bills or so. And we also have a joint committee hearing with the government, the GBO Committee, which are carryover bills from a few days ago. So what we'll do is we'll go into our 3:00 PM agenda, and when the GBO Committee is ready, we'll switch over, recess our TRS agenda, go into the GBO joint hearing, and then come back and finish up where we're at. So that said, we do have a number of bills, so to the extent folks can make sure that you have your written testimony submitted, we do have a lot of it already, and we'll be asking folks to summarize their testimony as much as possible, so we can get through everybody, since there are a lot of folks who are wishing to speak today. If you do go on a little too long, we'll ask you to just summarize and we'll move on. That said, up first is SB 2299 relating to traffic, which permits a bicyclist to proceed through an intersection from a right-turn-only lane under certain conditions, and testifying first on 2299 is the Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Inouye, and honorable members of the Transportation Committee, Jade Wutai for DOT. We stand on our testimony in support with concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is, looks like, also, I think we have duplicate Department of Transportation here, my apologies, HPD.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Captain Slater with the Honolulu Police Department's Traffic Division. We'd like to stand by our written testimony in opposition of Senate Bill 2299. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is the Hawaii Bicycling League in support, and Cycle on Hawaii.
Thank you, Chair Lee and committee members. I did submit written testimony. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. We're very much in support of this bill, and thank you for introducing it. I just got back from a ride going from Hawaii Kai all the way to Inukoa. There are at least five right-turn-only lanes, and in my written testimony, you'll see that, oh, I'm speaking on behalf of Cycle on Hawaii, you'll see the diagram of what a bicyclist is supposed to do under current law, that is, get out of the right-turn-only lane, get into the travel lane, go into the, pass the intersection, and then get back into the to the bike lane or to the shoulder. And this is very difficult for some bicyclists to do, especially when there's heavy traffic. The city has been pretty good about putting up signs where they allow bicyclists to go through, but the state hasn't been as proactive as that, so I ask you to go ahead and pass this through, just so that bicyclists don't have to choose between their own safety and following the law. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Testifying next is Bike Share Hawaii in support. I believe that's all the folks we have on this measure. Is there anyone else we missed? If not, are there any questions? Right. If not, thank you, everyone. Let's move on to the next measure, SB 2539 relating to vehicles, which makes the registered owner of a vehicle that is in violation of stop, stand, or park requirements liable for any penalty. And testifying first is the Department of Transportation.
Hello, Chair. We stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Chad Tani Gucci in support. If he's not with us, are there any questions on this measure? That's all the testimony we have. If not, thanks. Let's move on to the next measure, Senate Bill 3370 relating to construction management. Oh, I'm sorry. What we're gonna do is, for 3370, we're gonna move this to the end of our agenda. We did have a request just to see if we can get folks who wanted time, the ability not have conflicting hearings that are going on. So we'll move 3370 down to the end of the agenda. Up next is SB 3170 relating to fuel taxes, which allows federal pandemic relief funds received by the state to be used to supplement county highway funds, and testifying first on 3170 is...
Hello. Good afternoon, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Inouye, and members of the committee. Deputy Attorney General Janine Nduwe on behalf of the Department of the Attorney General. The department has concerns that a portion of this bill may be challenged as unconstitutional. We have submitted testimony detailing this concern and provided possible actions to address it. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this comment. I will be available for questions.
Thank you very much. Up next is on 3170, Department of Budget and Finance comments, Tax Foundation. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Lee, members of the committee, Tom Yamachika for Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We do share the attorney general's concern. In addition, we have another concern, and that is the bill references the county of Hawaii by name, and that may run afoul of the general law provision in the institution, which is, which is why a number of measures are phrased as well in a county with population greater than 500,000 or stuff like that. So it may need amendments along that line as well. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. We have additional testimony from one individual in support and one in opposition. That's all the testimony we have on this measure. Are there any questions? If not, thank you. Let's move on to the next measure, SB 3152, making an emergency appropriation to the Department of Transportation, which adds funds for the Highway Division Special Maintenance Program. And testifying first on this measure is the Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon again, Chair. We stand on our testimony in strong support.
Thank you. And that's all the testimony we have on this measure. Are there any questions? If not, I have just one, Director, if you're still with us.
Yes, Chair.
Thank you. Just note, just on, this is an emergency appropriation, so theoretically, if it goes forward, it would apply to the end of this fiscal year and into the next.
Yeah, it would be for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. So it would take into effect in July, and then June 30 of 2022 would be the end.
Is there a reason, I mean, is there a reason why it's an emergency appropriation now versus just a regular budget addition?
We, you know, the additional appropriation will help us with the, you know, with our maintenance and operations. You know, we're getting more federal funds from the infrastructure, so any additional appropriation can, you know, can we, can help our ability to, you know, with our maintenance and operations, Chair.
Sure. I guess I'm just wondering, I mean, is there a reason why it needs to be fast-tracked versus, you know, just passed in the normal course in April?
If you don't mind, Chair, I think Ed is on the, Ed, you wanna chime in? Or Tammy? Tammy Lee?
Tammy's on. She'll jump on real quick. So, Chair, the intent was for us to push this through as quickly as possible, with the hopes of this appropriation coming through for this fiscal year, if possible. The GM's coming down from the, from Governor's office, I believe. But that's why we pushed it forward as an emergency appropriation for 2021, 2022 timeframe.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Oh, Vice Chair.
Yes. Yeah, and this is for the maintenance program anyway. So usually, the maintenance program funds sort of kind of slip down if there's emergencies and stuff. I think you just wanna catch up, since you got some of, I think the governor, some of the federal funds that came down.
Absolutely. Thanks, Senator.
I know. You always complain about the maintenance program. So it's just for the maintenance program?
It is. We always need more money for that. And in general, when we were short on funding, this program is the one that suffers. So we underestimated the amount that we would collect during COVID. We collected 20 million more than we had thought, we had thought, and we're hoping to put it back into the system as soon as possible.
Okay. Yeah, I worry. I want the maintenance program to start going. I think we all do. Get rid of the potholes. Okay.
Okay. Any further questions on this measure? If not, thank you. Let's move on to the next bill, SB 2517 relating to bike commuting, which establishes goals for unspecified percentage of commuting trips in 2030. Testifying first on 2517 is Hawaii State Department of Transportation. I believe.
Hello, Chair. We stand on our comments as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii State Energy Office in, with comments. Ulupono Initiative.
Good afternoon, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Inouye, members of the committee, Michael Munikata here on behalf of the Ulupono Initiative. Chair, we'll stand on our testimony in support of this measure. Just a couple of brief comments. Just mentioning that we appreciate the state and this, and this committee really pushing for the state our increase in active transportation, looking at some of the health, climate, and energy, and cost of living issues that we're facing here as a state. I think we should start to explore how we can really decrease our vehicle miles traveled on our roads and find alternative routes of transportation here. And in general, again, we highlight within our testimony some of the issues around the costs associated with owning a vehicle. In 2020, Ulupono contracted out a study to kind of look into that. And, you know, what we found are some of these households, through both direct and indirect costs, are paying upwards of $40,000 a year just to own a vehicle here within the state. So really, I'm looking at other options that are out there, affordable options that would help us move actively, in a healthy manner, climate-friendly, but also in a a very affordable manner as well. So thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Up next is Hawaii Bicycling League. Actually, testifiers we have on this one, Hawaii Bicycling League in support, Hawaii Transportation Association in opposition, Bike Share Hawaii in support, Kawai EV in support, and Chad Tani Gucci in support. I believe that's everyone who had signed up to testify. So with that, are there any questions on this measure? Oh, Vice Chair.
Okay, just a comment and maybe a question, because I'm just wondering if if this measure, we're not talking about doing all these things on federal, on freeways, right? Because there's a difference between city and county and doing complete streets and versus what the state does. So I'm just wondering, with this bill, if we're talking about state roads? And does this include city roads as well? But we don't tell the city what to do, right?
We like telling the city what to do.
Yeah. So anybody from the city made?
I don't know if the city provided testimony on this one. I don't think they did.
So we're talking about, so what are we doing then? Can you tell us, what are we doing on state roads, on the freeways or highways? I know, and the concern I have is if we're putting bicycles on freeways, I have a concern. So that's why the only thing I can think of is freeways, as we don't have many freeways, per se, like Honolulu on Big Island. But here, that's why I'm asking if, are we considering allowing bicycles and for the future plans to be on the freeways or on ramps and off ramps, because right now they're prohibited. So that's the question, Chair.
Yeah, no, I don't think that's what this is contemplating. I think in DOT's enabling statute, there's directions to provide for all modes of transportation, including bicycling, pedestrian, et cetera. But those facilities don't exist in every place, so trying to build that out, I think, is the end goal here.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. So it's gonna be on freeways and areas of jurisdiction under DOT, because we're promoting the bicycles and promoting the e-bikes. So, anyway, just, just a concern, and I was hoping somebody would tell me if that's the goal.
Okay. We'll come back to that in...
All right. Okay, that's just a comment.
It's on order.
Okay.
Sure.
Any other? Oh, Senator Decoit.
Hi, Chair. Um, you know, I got a question. Um, you know, my areas are remote areas. Oh, I know. Um, Ed, can I talk to Ed? Sorry. I was in Zoom land in another...
He's waiting for you.
But Ed, like, Ed, I, every time I, I get plenty issues in Hana. I have one problem with a bill like this, because I already deal with a lot of tourists coming into Hana, so how, how are you guys gonna put, you know, these bikes blocking all the traffic? People are honking and pissed with them, and they're coming down Hala Kalau Highway. So how, how is this supposed to work, like, in areas like mine and the rural areas that the distance is really far? Like, can you, like, help me?
Yeah. So I said, you know, DOT's approach to all of this. For us, we make sure that we, anytime we touch a system, we upgrade that system for all users that should be using it. So in areas, as Senator, you know, I had talked about, in areas where, like, on H1, H2, H3, that's a complete street in and of itself. We're not gonna be adding bicyclists and pedestrians on that. When we start looking at rural, we're trying to see how we can connect, better connect all modes of transportation to give more people opportunities to try for access. And in a lot of areas, like in your rural community coming into town area, or like from Nanakuli down into downtown Honolulu, putting in a bike lane of 22 miles not gonna help reduce VMT. So we don't focus on that. We focus on making sure that we, we include transportation options in that urban core, within that 15- to 20-minute travel time that's associated with residents to their destination. That's what we focus on. When we start looking at those more rural areas, to me, we gotta start adjusting our land use pieces to ensure that we have more job opportunities closer to those areas, so you don't have to drive that far. That's how we...
Because I'm kind of looking at the safety issue. One is the backlog of traffic. Two is, how much money do we get to buy up properties for the bike lanes, even in those areas? So like, do you guys have the funds to, like, do that? And how do we, um, so like, I like bicycles. I just don't like paddling them to uphills, but, um, like, in my area, like, we have parks. So like, the residents have said, you know, ride your bike around a park, because we already have a backlog with Pa'ia. Like, the traffic is so backed up, I cannot stretch even Pa'ia Town anymore. So you have, you guys have something going forward, looking at that, or just?
Yeah, that's the difficulty for us. I mean, we all know we landlocked, and we have a restricted area that we have for all users to use. In some cases, it's not feasible for us to add transportation options in some areas. So we use, we can't, you know, we started looking at the parallel routes to see how we build connectivity, not just with the state system. I know everybody would love to have it. I'd love to do it too, but we just don't have the resources for everything.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, any further questions on this one? If not, let's move on. Thank you, everybody. The next measure up is SB 23, excuse me, 3274, yes, 3274, testifying first on 3274 is Department of Transportation.
Hello, Chair. We stand on our testimony in opposition.
Thank you. Up next is the State Energy Office with comments. Hawaii Public Health Institute in support, Ulupono Initiative.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair Michael Munikata on behalf of the Ulupono Initiative. We'll stand on our testimony in support, and similar to the previous measure, I think what we're looking to do is really to increase the affordable options that are available to our people here in Hawaii. Again, just reiterating that, you know, the cost of owning a vehicle here within the state, a vehicle economy within this state is quite high, and they continue, those prices continue to go up. So just, just reiterating the need to really look at things a little bit differently, and maybe look at some long-term planning to really adjust how we traverse our roads, whether it's within a certain community or across towns. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Up next is Hawaii Bicycling League.
Aloha. We support 3274. Compared to other states, Hawaii spends very little on bike and pedestrian projects. According to the League of American Cyclists, Hawaii ranks 38th out of 50 for bike friendliness. On Oahu, we currently have only about 10% of our Priority One Bike Plan projects completed, when at this point, we should have at least 40% done. So we're way behind, and it shows in the number of cyclists and pedestrians who are being injured and killed by motor vehicles. On Oahu, between 2020 and 2021, there were 146 cyclists injured and three killed by motor vehicles. 81% of those were not in a bike lane. And bike lanes decreased crashes by 50%, protected bike lanes by 90%. A study by Coldwell Banker found that 78% of respondents want to live in areas that help reduce their gas bills. Households in auto-dependent communities devote 20% more to transportation than those with complete streets. Investing in bike and pedestrian infrastructure decreases street infrastructure costs, pollution, isolation, personal costs, traffic, obesity, and asthma. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Hawaii Transportation Association with comments, Bike Share Hawaii in support, and we have three individuals in support and one in opposition. I believe that's all the testimony we have on this measure.
This is Natalie.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So Natalie Wasa, for the record, I do support this measure. I cited several examples in my testimony in which the Department of Transportation hasn't been very forthcoming as far as bicycle safety and pedestrian safety, and in particular, the one that I cited going back to 2012 was very frustrating with the right-turn-only lane. And it seems like there's more of a positive attitude toward bicyclists and pedestrians in the current administration, but there are still issues out there. For example, the the shoulder between Hawaii Kai and Waimeanalo is horrendous, and it hasn't been fixed in over a decade. So, you know, some of these things are putting in new infrastructure, but some are just maintaining what we already have. So I ask you to pass this, and I look forward to actually reading the DOT's testimony, because I haven't seen that yet. Thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else we missed? If not, we just had a couple of folks in the chat asking what bill we're on. We are on Bill SB 3274 at the moment. Okay, is there anybody else we missed? If not, are there any questions? Senator Decoit.
DOT, please.
Senator?
Ed. In these areas that has been mentioned about bike paths and shoulders, and I just can say, in my area, Pa'ia, Hana, those are areas that are close with houses and stuff, until you start doing the whole trek from Kahului to Hana. What would it cost us to put these bike lanes in? And if the car not riding in the bike lane, who should pay for this?
So in areas like, like your, your neighborhoods, Senator, would be expensive. I mean, because we don't have the right-of-way that's necessary to plus up or add on to that facility to add the bike lanes, it'd be pretty expensive to acquire the property, go through environmental studies, and then add in those facilities. I can get you the numbers specifically for that area. But there are some facilities that we have. One that Natalie had, had indicated is an issue on the shoulders that we can, that we can improve. And we have a project that's reconstructing that whole area right now. Previous to this administration, paving used to happen just in the, in the vehicle lanes. This administration came in and put in a policy that required all of the area to be resurfaced. And anytime we resurface, we make sure that we plus up for all users of the facility, which is why you saw narrower lanes that we constructed with wider bike lanes or shoulders in those areas, in any place that we, that we have the space to do so. We also added in shared-use paths in a lot of areas where there was necessary space for us. So we've been plussing up throughout, throughout our, throughout our system, anytime we touch the corridors.
So, so, so like, um, you know, we talk about bike accidents. Like, I know where, where we live, you know, we know our roads, because we're sustainable, we go on the dirt roads, right? So when they ask for bicycle paths, and we've always been told that, you know, we constantly take from urban Honolulu to fund island of Molokai. How do, um, because I know people like riding bikes. I do too, but not really uphills, but how do we, how do we come to a balance of these areas that we're trying to go green? Because, I mean, the plan is great in going green, I like that, but the cost factor, like, you guys have solutions, in other words, so that if we are to put the bike paths in, who gets taxed on this? And, I mean, pavement and cement is one thing, like, but the cost-wise, like, and how do, like, I know, like, cut mountains in Hana. I don't think we, like, take, because we like our trees and we like our environment. So I wanna be green, but if I'm cutting more mountains, like, I, I, I mean, you know, how, how do you come up with that?
You're hitting it on the head. It's a balance of priorities and a balance of resources. So to your point, or to your question, vehicle owners pay for all of this, through gas tax, through a vehicle weight tax, registration fees and the like. All of that comes into the state highway fund that we use with the federal, federal funds to push forward any improvements on the state system, including bike paths and, and shoulders. But that being said, we are committed to a greener, a greener future, but we gotta prioritize everything. We, we don't have the luxury of looking at just one portion of the program. We gotta look at all of it.
So, so Ed, then, like, and Jennifer is, so, like EVs that some areas cannot afford or does not have the resources for the electric plug-ins, you, you guys, well, not you guys, but we've taxed the people using gas. So is the recommendation to tax the bikes using bikes, or to tax the guys not using the bike for bike paths, like? Because the, the car guys is pissed at me that, like, I don't know if I do, but how do you come to where people are upset they're already paying high prices for this stuff?
We've always advocated for a user-based fee for our system. That's why we're pushing on the road usage charge, so that people pay for what they use on the system. It would be the same, the same type of thing if, if bike riders were taxed as well. So, you know, that's a policy issue that I think we gotta talk about more, but really, to come down to it right now, we're just trying to balance the resources that we have, focus where we can, provide multimodal access, and where people are gonna use it.
Okay. Thanks, Chair. Sorry, long.
Senator Inouye?
Yeah. Can I have bicycling league, please? Janelle?
Yes.
Yeah. You know, it seems like what we're looking at here, to me, it affects more the city and county roads, city and county of Honolulu. And I know Mayor Caldwell has done a good job about putting in the bike lanes in, in some areas, and I'm sure you folks want more. So now we're going into the state, and I think probably Senator Decoit has the same issues that I have and the concerns about about traversing onto state highways. So is this bill, I mean, are you guys satisfied with, or not satisfied with, what the city is doing?
Um, not, not satisfied.
Yeah, so now you come to the state. So the question is, and it was really interesting, too, if I'm reading the DOT's comments as well, you know, they, they support, you know, traversing and, and having, you know, multimodal usage of cars, but you know, it seems like biking to work, which I support as well, but it seems like is it necessary that the state should consider doing that as well, no different than what the city is doing with complete streets? But you can't do a complete streets on a, on a state highway. That, that's a concern I have. So maybe I'm lost out there someplace.
Um, yeah, a lot of cyclists do.
Most of the streets are managed by the counties. Most of the streets are managed by the counties, and and that's where you need to tell me.
There are quite a few um, roads within urban Honolulu that do belong to the state.
Okay, like uh, as an example, where do you want to see more bikes?
Um, I believe Alamoana is on state, Kamehameha. Um, there are several others uh, that are actually in the Honolulu Bike Plan. And they are priority one, which are supposed to be completed by twenty twenty four. Um, and at this point, it doesn't look like they're going to be completed, and we have concerns about that. Um, they're supposed to be um, protected bike lanes. So they have a physical protection from the cars. And there are also a lot of roads, state highways, um, that people take to exercise. And um, the shoulders are really bad, and it's very dangerous in in some places. Um, because there isn't much of a shoulder in some places, and in some places there are way too many potholes. Uh, so they need to be maintained.
Yeah, then I have another question and and being here on Oahu more times than I'm at home. Um, so you're saying, well, what we are hearing is that we need to relieve traffic, and we need more traffic lanes, and that's what we hear and we get after it. Uh, and that's why they had to add another lane on um, going down to uh, Puloa Street going up before you get to the the intersection, uh, the branching off to IAI and then going up to Tripler. Um, but that's what we hear. So if we're taking away lanes and putting in uh, lanes for toward bicycles um, and 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 those doing their exercise, as as we heard Ed said is that sometimes they're they don't even have easements to do and enhance a a uh, another highway or roadway. So I guess then, thanks anyway. Uh, Ed, can I have you back on? Okay, Ed, yeah. So what what you're saying is that because there are some things I know you already are doing, just as you mentioned to Senator Decoy. So do we need this bill?
I don't think so. From our perspective, we have.
You're already doing, you're already hearing um, the concerns of the community where you can enhance, you know, areas. Um, like, I guess Natalie had uh, mentioned as well. So you are doing something.
Yes.
Because I, yeah. Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, further questions? Um, just a quick time check. It's three thirty four. As I noted before, we do have a joint agenda with the GBO Committee. So we're just waiting word that they're done with their three o'clock agenda. They're doing one just like us singly. So as soon as they reach out, we will switch over. Um, and then come back to this agenda again for the folks who are waiting. So anyway, in the meantime, um, further questions on this measure? If not, all right.
Chair, you have until what time is your, you um, you have until three thirty, oh, no, four o'clock?
Give another hour roughly.
Okay, until four thirty. All right.
Chair, I got a quick question.
Go ahead.
Sure, so like, so what is our our highest, i- is transportation our highest cost today? I- if if we look at the budget, is that our highest cost?
Is it DOT?
Or or maybe, uh, yeah, anybody? Wh- what is the highest cost for us right now?
But Senator, this is Ed. Also, he asked me about the what the bill was saying about transportation costs being the highest. I think from our perspective is housing. Um, I think Governor and the Legislature have all said that our economy is driven by housing costs. Um, our land use that requires the poor, the more, the less fortunate to live further from town is what drives everything up. So from our perspective, we've been looking at using infrastructure to incentivize more commercial centers in different locations to ensure that people can minimize their commute as much as possible. So from our perspective, it's housing.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, uh, thanks, Chair.
Other question?
As we go to GBO. Okay.
Okay, um, why don't we? We have time for probably one more bill on this. Uh, why don't we go on to SB two thousand six? Maybe just yet. Hey, you guys are still unmuted over there. Um, SB two thousand six relating to the Deputy Director of Highways, the Department of Transportation, which requires the uh, position to be subject to the advising consent of the Senate. And testifying first on two thousand six is Department of Transportation.
Lord Chair, uh, we stand on our comments submitted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we have testimony uh, from two individuals, one with comments, one in opposition. And that's all the testimony we have. Are there any questions on this measure?
I sure do.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I'm wondering why we're we're getting to the Deputy Director for Transportation? Because most of all, our deputies don't need to be confirmed. I was just curious. Do you know?
Is that is that for DOT?
I don't know, or maybe if you had an answer. Who's bill is this? Is this yours?
This is not my bill.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, uh, can I have Jade, that Deputy Director?
Uh, Senator, that's not, this is not our bill as well.
Yeah, I know, because, yeah, I I I'm kind of concerned about this, but, okay, all right.
Okay, any further questions on this measure? All right, if not, um, why don't we move on then to our next bill? Looks like GBO still has a little bit of time. Uh, so moving on to SB two eight three four relating to transportation. Uh, this is the Transportation Improvement Modernization Commission to ensure the Department of Transportation achieves state goals and outcomes um, while providing better transparency. And testifying first on, excuse me, two eight three four uh, is Department of Transportation.
Lord Chair, uh, we stand on our testimony, uh, offering comments.
Thank you. Up next is Hawaii State Energy Office.
Hello, Chair. We, I'm Kirsten Baumgart Turner, Deputy State Energy Officer here for Scott Glenn. Uh, we stand in on our testimony that we submitted with comments.
Thank you. Up next is Department of Health with comments. With Ulupono Initiative.
Afternoon, Chair Vice Chair Michael Munikata on behalf of the Ulupono Initiative. I stand on our testimony in support of this measure. I think, um, you know, increasing some of these um, numbers and and transparency for us to take a look at would be great. I know that there was a lot of work done last session around Act one thirty one to require a little bit more robust reporting. However, I don't think that um, some of those uh, reporting metrics have been coming out to date. So um, I think that, you know, having some kind of commission that would help to create a more transparent process would be great. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Up next, uh, Hawaii Transportation Association with comments. Bike Share Hawaii in support. Uh, Hawaii Regional Council of Carpenters in support, and one individual in opposition. I believe that's all the testimony we have on this measure. Uh, unless we missed anybody, but it doesn't look like it. Are there any questions?
It's two eight three four.
No, go ahead, go ahead, please.
Okay, um, yeah, we stand in support. Um, according to the League of American Cyclists and Alliance for Biking and Walking, Hawaii has an overall um, data transparency score of C plus. It has a D for description clarity and a D for open data. And we've heard reports from our members that they've spent countless hours um, volunteering and organizing to get their funding for bike projects, only to find out later that the money or the projects were secretly removed. Um, the government officials often agree to funding to appease the citizens. And then we wonder why nothing gets done since we can't follow the paper trail. Um, with more transparency, we can better organize to ensure our endless hours don't go to waste. It will allow the project to get done that the people want, which will benefit citizens in the state as a whole.
Thank you. Anybody else we missed? All right, if not, um, are there any questions on this measure? And if, oh, sorry, Vice Chair, go ahead.
Yes, I do want to add that, um, I don't know if people realize that the transportation, most of the agencies, harbors, airports, in particular, um, ha- have oversight. Um, the airlines are the contributors to, as an example, uh, the airports. Uh, and this bill is calling for a commission. I assume it's for all transportation. Because it doesn't designate, so, um, and that will be, um, probably with the federal guidelines and the airport rules uh, that we have in place that the state has to abide by. Um, I think it'll be very difficult for a commission to oversee uh, what is improved, I mean, what is called for in section two. Um, modernization as well, uh, and the same true with harbors. Because we have the contributors from the users pay into the special fund for the harbors as well. Uh, true for the high, the highway, um, most of them are by federal dollars and by federal rules. So I can't see how we're going to benefit having a commission. So unless you're going to have a working group do something, but I I see no benefit uh, because of the controls of the joint relationship um, between um, the areas that I covered. So tell me how best that we can, we're doing it. Now, we all have to understand that the co- the Department of Transportation is already working with their twenty fifty plans, I believe, um, and Ed and everybody else in, um, uh, I I guess airports and harbors, we've already completed the twenty twenty modernization plan during the Lingos time. So that comes from the the agency. And so when they do their modernization plan um, as well, the governor, then they complete um, what it's going to cost and start um, mandating that this is the modernization plan, and they got the funds for it from the money committees. So, um, I I was very pleased that the modernization plan that the Trump Department of Transportation did for the airports and the harbors uh, because we lost about almost fourteen years after Senator, uh, Governor Lingo left, which she floated the modernization plan in two thousand and six. And so nothing was done until the EGA administration came in. So, but they do have plans and that's the process. So I can't see how we can make, uh, probably, uh, take advantage of a commission. So it's just my thought. Thank you.
Okay, further questions? Senator Decoy.
So, um, the bikers, um, bikers, uh, what's her name?
Janelle.
Janelle?
Yeah.
So so Janelle, I noticed that, um, you guys go by the, uh, uh, what is it, American Bikers League?
League of American Cyclists.
So you guys take the rating of a mainland entity, not the Hawaii Bicycle League? Of how Hawaii's, um, uh, transportation is rated? Is that how you guys do that?
Um, the League of American Cyclists are the national advocacy group. And they've done studies on all states in the US.
So you guys are not satisfied with the with the transparency that DOT has? Realizing that cost has always been a factor, and that when government has secretly removed money, do you realize that they also go out? And these things are put out for bids and the challenges of us being in the middle of the Pacific Ocean has become a challenge for us to seek, um, those bids and the transparency of them doing due diligence, which is why the procurement exists.
Um, yeah, I don't know the details of of that study. Um, I can send it to you if you'd like.
Oh, well, I think you guys should look at, um, the studies that the state has done and see that I I believe with the funds that is put forward, I mean, literally, I think DOT could do anything if we just had the funds to do it, yeah. Um, and again, I think in consideration, while they're trying to remain green, because I have bicyclists that don't want me to cut into roads and trees and trying to enjoy the natural beauty. While every time we make an adjustment, especially in areas of um, environment and going green, we're affecting the environment and, um, the landscape, and it's taking away from the beauty. Um, areas that I represent do not like a lot of the paved areas that are there. So I want you want to know that we put commissions on commissions and where does it take us, yeah? So how far do you folks want to go on inputting? Because you folks are inputting broad, but you need to go into other rural areas and consider that, yeah. Um, but I want you to consider that I feel that the department has done a really good job. And it's easy to hem and haw about stuff, but, you know, you folks have to understand that funds have been held back for many of us, and even on the west side, you know, we're so congested with with just trying to get there. And then to add these uh, bicyclists on the road creates a lot of accidents also. But I feel that they've done a really good job, so, you know, the condemning of the DOT, I think, is kind of uncalled for. But I want to share that with you.
Three.
I just leave in a comment, so, for that, but thank you, thank you. And then, um, Ulupono if, oh, sorry, Jay.
I just, I just want to echo what you said, uh, Senator, because, uh, you know, we're a very complex and diverse department that no one from the outside looking in can, you know, reasonably be expected to understand. I mean, you know, we must be realistic. I mean, even under the best of circumstance, I mean, the department cannot do every project or meet everyone's need. I mean, we don't have unlimited time, uh, resources or manpower, so that's why we need to establish priorities. Thank you.
And I appreciate that because I got roads falling down. I got people not having access to go home. So, you know, I appreciate that when we prioritize stuff, that we do it at the safety level first and foremost, because people want to get home. Um, and and thank you for, Jip, I want I want to, um, talk with, um, Ulupono, um, really quick. If Michael, you can jump. So so Michael, I'm good. Thank you for joining us. So Michael, you know, um, I I read your testimony and I wanted to find out what part of no transparency is there?
I guess, to to answer your question, Senator, it's just to increase transparency. I think, um, you know, one of the previous testifiers spoke to some of the difficulties in tracking down some of these numbers and um, regarding projects that are going out um, through the DOT and really, um, trying to track some of the measurable outcomes of these projects. I think that, you know, from a state perspective, Ulupono is interested in tracking to make sure that we're spending our money and spending it wisely, and and that those opportunities that do present themselves at the federal level um, that we do pursue those opportunities. I think there's measures that we heard today that that really look to um, give the DOT some some ability to seek out some of those options at a federal level so that we can get more funding, say, for these bicycle lanes, pedestrian access, and really make it a safe situation in each community. I think safety is is of utmost importance, first and foremost. You're correct.
So so so, Michael, glad you said that, because, you know, right now, you know, one is, uh, we we're in COVID. You guys are an organization that also seeks out grants, yeah? You know, all too often, we quick on bashing our state departments and they really work hard. I don't know if you realize, um, this last rainfall that had, I had one person, um, up country Maui when roads washed out, um, I got the most rural areas. But you know, uh, the the attitude of just everybody like, I want this, I want that, like, you guys are an entity like, um, Office of Energy, like, help them, like, you guys. Office of Energy, like, help them, like, you guys know what is out there, but you know, this has got to change, man, like, I, I, I would appreciate you guys trying to help them, because you folks also look at a lot of stuff within the federal government, and they don't have an individual that can do everything. So try, you know, as Ulupono Initiative, who I have a lot of respect for you guys also. You know, I think the, this style of working together needs to be more embraced, yeah, versus us saying, I like this and I like that, and because I believe when many of the residents couldn't get home because of a washout that I had one person trying to get all these roads back in and the debris off, yeah? And Robin Shishiro guys had cracked their butts in the most remote areas, yeah? So just like share that with, with you guys, yeah, that sometimes we got to look at just getting people home to their families and back in their houses, so. I just wanted to say that. Thank you. And I know, um, Chair, that we got to jump into another, but appreciate that. Mahalo. Thanks.
Sure. Okay. Um, it is three fifty-two. So do a quick check with GVO Committee. In the meantime, let's keep going on this. Any further questions on this measure? If not, let's move on to SB three two five.
Sorry, Chris, Chris, real quick, um. I like, can you give me DOT real quick? I, I got one question I need for DOT.
Senator?
Ed, in, in, in all it is with the commission, and, and I went off track a little. How do you guys do reporting? Like, how do you guys report back?
So we have our annual reporting that we do, uh, to legislature that talks about all the goals and value sets that we have. Um, and we put it out online. So since, uh, two years ago, we started posting it online for everybody, so everybody sees the goals that we had set, how we had measured with them, and what initiatives that we pushed forward for all of them. That's, it's on our Act one hundred reporting on our website. We send it to DOT, to the legislature, and we also post it on our website. We also post the next year's report as well. So everybody can see the goals that we set, and everybody can see the progress we make monthly. Uh, we also have on our, our, our website, our project status map, that you can look up any project that we have with, that's going to go within the next two years. You can see the projects that are in construction right now. You can see all the data that we use to justify any of our projects. Our fatalities on our system, our major crashes, volumes on the roads, the conditions of the roadways and, and the like. So, um, for Microsoft, we report pretty well. But if somebody sees that information is missing out there, happy to, happy to talk story with them to see what else we can put out there. Um, I think.
So, so Ed, are you, are you guys like, can you guys drop the link in the chat? Because I know some people get a really hard time. Like, I think that would help, so that way we can, you know, like, knock out the issue of we're not being transparent. But I think that would be really helpful, and I, and I appreciate that, because I think that's the whole issue is that they figured that we're, you guys are not reporting, so I appreciate you sharing that.
Not at all, not at all. And, you know, we, a lot of times, we have to cancel projects. I mean, you and, um, and Senator Inoue, uh, had major projects in your communities that we had to not move forward on because of costs, so. That's, that happens, but we always inform the community that we're going to pull back on them, and we make sure that everybody understands it's a necessary project, we just can't afford it at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Let's move on to SB three two five five relating to highways. This appropriates funds for CIP projects in YNI. And testifying first on three two five five is Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon again, Chair. Uh, we stand on our, uh, comments that submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have testimony from the Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party in support. Ulupono Initiative in support. Uh, Hawaii Hawaiian Community Development Board in support. Bike Share Hawaii in support, one individual in support, and one individual in opposition. I believe that's all the testimony we have. Did we miss anybody? If not, are, are there any, are there any questions? If not, all right, let's move on to the next measure. SB thirteen forty-eight. This establishes the Maritime Commission to oversee regulation of water carriers in the state, and testifying first on thirteen forty-eight is, uh, PUC. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong.
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, can't start my video. Somebody else has to do it on your side, I believe. But good afternoon, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Inoue, members of the committee, Leo Assange, Commissioner with the PUC. There you go. You're such a commissioner with the PUC. Uh, we'll stand on our written testimony, providing comments on this bill.
Okay, thank you. Up next, DCCA.
Aloha, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Inoue, members of the committee, Dean Nishina with the Division of Consumer Advocacy. I believe you have our written testimony, offering comments on this measure. I'm available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Budget and Finance with comments. Young Brothers.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and members of the committee. Chris Nakagawa on behalf of Young Brothers, similarly, will stand on our written testimony in support of the intent. Uh, available for any questions. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Up next, uh, one individual in opposition. That's all the testimony we have. Are there any questions? Vice Chair.
Yes, maybe to, um, let's see. Dean Nishina?
Yes, um, I, I'm here, Vice Chair.
Okay, you have some history with this as well. Can you share with us your comments?
Sure, um, well, to, to briefly summarize my testimony.
Background, yeah.
S- sorry, yeah, um. Let me know if there's, I, I'm getting a network issue, so hopefully I'm, I'm coming through, but, um. Okay, um. I think this legislation may be related to the situation that, uh, that occurred in, in twenty twenty with respect to the concern with the, the, the water carrier um, and the financial crisis they had. There, there was that measure in the, uh, twenty twenty session proposing a temporary uh, switch of the regulatory oversight from um, the Public Utilities Commission to the Department of Transportation, if I remember correctly. That, that measure didn't move forward. But, you know, the, the comments we're offering in our testimony here, you know, is, is pointing out, you know, there's already existing, uh, oversight, and to create a new commission may not necessarily be the, the, the best use of, of, of resources. Um, and then, you know, finally, in, in our testimony, we point out if, if the measure is adopted as proposed, it's not clear whether or not there'd be any consumer advocacy role i- in this new commission, because if you, if you take away two sixty-nine and two seventy-one G points to two sixty-nine, and our office is authorized by two sixty-nine, you know, sections fifty-one through fifty-five. So if, if you basically, um, separate two seventy-one G from two sixty-nine, there'd be no, um, consumer advocate, and, you know, our concern is for the consumers, right?
Yeah. Okay, then, um, also, Dean, were you here in the early two thousand?
I, 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 I was still with the division. Um, what, what's your question?
But, well, the, the comment is, and that's why I asked for, um, your testimony, is because when I came on in nineteen ninety-eight in the Senate, nineteen ninety-nine, so after that, my fellow Viking Kilo Hi Chair of Transportation. Yeah, uh, anyway, he proposed a commission, and I remember it was a long debate. And I, and I think we also heard, um, you know, the, the consequences that go with it, and some of the unintended consequences. And I, I, and I think, I believe, I heard something like that with regards to, um, you know, the, uh, the advocacy role that, that DCCA plays in it, so. Uh, it seems like it's still there, so, okay, thanks for your comments as well. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you for your question.
Okay.
Any further questions? If not.
Can I have Leo?
Oh, go ahead.
This is, um, PUC.
Yeah.
Um. Would things change with, with your role in PUC?
Um, other than we would.
Would it deforce, would it deforce the maritime portion that you folks oversee presently?
Yeah, basically, what, what the bill is doing is creating a light commission just for maritime.
Okay, yeah, so that means that the oversight that the PUC already does will be severed and given to the Maritime Commission.
It would transfer over.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Any further questions? All right, if not, um, believe the GVO Committee, uh, just for everybody watching, the GVO Committee with whom we're about to have a joint agenda, I believe, is wrapping up their first agenda. So what we're going to do is recess this agenda. We'll go into the joint GVO agenda with that committee, and then we'll come back to finish this up. We have just a couple more bills on this one. So let's see if they are ready here. Take a quick recess for just a sec here. Recession. Two seven five six relating to water carriers, which creates a two-tier rated adjustment for water carriers based on automatic annual increases and establishes an agricultural cargo shipping subsidy. And testifying first on two seven five six is the Attorney General.
Good afternoon, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Inoue, and members of the committee, um, Deputy Attorney Marjorie Lau, appearing on behalf of the Department of the Attorney General. We provide comments as contained in our written testimony, and we are available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Up next is the PUC.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the, you're assumption, Commissioner, the PUC, will stand on our written, on our written testimony, providing comments on this bill.
Thank you. Up next is DCCA.
Aloha again, uh, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Uh, we stand on our written testimony as well, uh, available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Budget and Finance with comments. I see Director Choi sitting there, but I don't think he's on this bill. Okay, uh, in that case, Young Brothers.
Good afternoon, Chris Nakagawa, on behalf of Young Brothers. Uh, we also stand on written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, my video is not working.
Oh, you're, that's, that's okay. Uh, I believe we saw you on earlier, so we know you're not a bot.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also have, um, from Maui County Farm Bureau comments, Hawaii Farm Bureau comments, and Hawaii Cattlemen's Council comments. Is that all the testifiers wishing to testify in this measure? If there's no one else, are there any questions? All right. If not, um, let's go on to SB two four seven five, which clarifies that amounts received or accrued for stevedoring services and related services, warfage and demerage are exempt under the G E T. And testifying first on this measure is Department of Taxation.
Uh, thank you, Chair, Isaac Choi, uh, Tax Department. Chair, we're, we're in opposition to this bill, and we're asking you to hold this particular bill. The current issue before us in this bill is currently being litigated in the Tax Appeals Court. Uh, it's, uh, Pasha Transportation Limited versus me. So, uh, I think it would just muddle the waters. I fully realize that the legislature can pass any bill that they want, but since it is being litigated, I, I think, um, it is not appropriate right now to have this clarification. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Up next is Budget and Finance with comments. Uh, Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments, and Metzen Navigation Company in support. Are those all the testifiers on this measure this afternoon? All right, if so, are there any questions? All right. If not, thank you. Moving on then to SB two six two seven, making emergency appropriation to the Department of Transportation for perimeter fence at Kohului Airport, uh, testifying first is the Department of Transportation.
Aloha, Chair. Uh, we stand on our testimony in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you. Maui Chamber of Commerce in support, and one individual in support. Uh, is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? All right, if not, are there any questions? All right, if not, um. We want to go back to the earlier measure, which we moved to the end of the agenda for one of our colleagues. And that was SB three three seven zero relating to construction management, which creates a three-year pilot program within DOT uh, for the procurement of professional services from construction management consultants. Testifying first is DOT. On three three seven zero.
Lord Chair, we, we stand on our testimony, uh, in opposition.
Thank you. Up next is the American Council of Engineering Companies of Hawaii.
Uh, yeah, good afternoon, Chair. I'm going to start my video here. There you go. Uh, yep, uh, Ikai Kinkaid, on behalf of A C E C H. We stand in opposition of this bill. Uh, we believe that qualification-based selection should be considered for construction management. Construction managers are a critical position in the construction of, of products and, and projects throughout the, the state, and having knowledgeable and competent construction managers um, greatly increases the, the project timeline, um, the construct, looking out for potential constructibility constraints and, and other um, issues and, and, and helping to minimize cost overruns that potentially could happen. And so we feel that having a qualified professional is, is instrumental in the construction management field.
Thank you very much. Up next is consort engineers.
Uh, that, that would be me again, uh, but I'm speaking on behalf of A C E C.
Okay. In opposition, and then Yogi Quang engineers. In opposition, Okahara and Associates. Opposition, um, Construction Management Association of America. In opposition, SSFM International, and opposition, um, Sandy Wong.
Um, yes, I'm here, Chair. Um, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, uh, members of the committee. My name is Sandy Wong. I'm here testifying as an individual this afternoon, um, but I would echo the testimony of A C E C. I would also question in light of DOT's, um, testimony and opposition. I don't really see a need for this bill. I don't think, you know, DOT doesn't even want a pilot program. That being said, you know, as a citizen of the state, um, as A C E C stated, the construction ma- manager plays a very important role in state projects. And so I think we need to get the most qualified person to do that, not the cheapest person. So I think we really need to maintain qualification-based selection, and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, one other individual in opposition. Is that everyone wishing to testify in this measure? Did we miss anybody? If not, are there any questions?
I, I don't. So, thank you, um. Ja- Jade, Jade, I got a question. I, I, I remember, um, touring the facility back, um, and I was just gonna say, I took a tour to Hawaiian Airlines cargo one. Um, and I was kind of disappointed, but anyway, I, I, my question is, does DOT have a database on approved companies on the professional services uh, when they're listed? uh, when they're listed?
Or just DOT or you're talking about airports?
Uh, in, in this case, uh, I, I'm gonna relate them to what happened at the airport. Do you folks have a list of that, um, in a database of approved companies?
Yeah, I think we, we, we do, uh, Senator. So, companies, yes.
Okay, so, so if, so on that list, how, how somebody get on, how, how do they get on that list?
We, uh, we usually, uh, put out, uh, uh, you know, that we, we were trying, you know, for, for certain, uh, you know, those A and E projects. They, uh, you know, we put out, uh, like a notice to bid that, uh, you know, companies can put their, you know, qualifications.
So, so, so when, so after they go to that part, um, um, who, who, who do the decision, um, with the companies and how they selected and then negotiated with? Does, does the DOT do that or?
Yeah, we have a selection panel in our, depending on what the project is, we, you know, we have engineers that, you know, that, uh, will do the, you know, the evaluation, uh, of the qualifications.
And then within that, like, so then the, does the, does the, um, does the contract get negotiated and like, um, like, how, what is the criteria? The criteria of the uses, like, is it consistent for all contracts or?
Well, depending on, you know, what the project is, it's sometimes we want, you know, we wanna look at, you know, uh, you know, do they have reference projects? What, you know, they've done in the past because you don't wanna be like the guinea pig that they're gonna.
Yeah.
And, you know, so, uh, previous projects, uh, we, we look at those and then, you know, also to make sure the, you know, the rates is, you know, reasonable.
So, so, so like, i- i- in the case, I'll see the, the renovations that took place, and I know we had so many problems, we had something like fifteen hundred discrepancies. Are those, like, that in the, that company or the individual, would they be allowed back on that list? Based on, you know, the team going back, oh, I guess, when you do the contracts? I, I just curious because, you know, often we, we get these projects going on and then we get so many, um, discrepancies. Um, are, 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 is there like, is there a blacklist, like, like, because black, they're blacklisted off because of negligence, of failing to do a contract, um, with? And, and I'm just, I shouldn't just say airports with anything. Do they get listed off or are they allowed to then bid again on another contract?
Yeah, Ed, uh, Ed or Ross, because, uh, can you guys come in?
Hello, Senator. I can speak from highways perspective. Um, for highways, uh, all, all of our consultants are selected based on three criteria. Um, past performance, their technical ability to work and their capacity. So we always select on that. Now, I say we because highway selects, but the, the pointies never get involved in the selection. It's all the staff that takes care of it. In that selection, whatever, um, proposals or qualifications come in, our staff look through those proposals, those qualifications to see the best suit for that project. Now, that being said, we have a database of all the consultants that come in. Every year, we put out an annual ad to qualify all of the consultants. If you're on that annual ad, you can submit for any of our projects. If you didn't get on the annual ad, you can also submit your qualifications during that, that specific project. That being said, we have a database on, on the performance of all of our consultants. And our, our staff looks at several things when they, when they start weighing out, um, how they select a, a consultant. First, the technical ability, of course, and their capacity to do the work. They look at their past performance and they look at how many projects they have with the DOT. To try and see and make sure they make an assumption of what the, their capacity would be to perform that work for us. All of those things are considered. So past performance is definitely one of the pieces that we put in there. We rank our employees annually at least and at least at the, at the beginning, and, and I'm sorry, at the end of the project as well. So all of their performance is captured in, in the projects that we have done with them.
So, so Ed, if, if, say that, that one, um, contract that went out, like, because this one was like really bad.
I just, uh, if you can summarize that, uh, GVO committee is here and ready to go on our other agenda.
Actually, I think I could, I, I can do one. I can have another comment. Thank you. I just was, yeah, I just, thank you. Thanks, thanks, Chair.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Um, so we're gonna recess our three P M agenda and then we'll go into, uh, I believe GVO is leading us off on our joint GVO TRS agenda. So recess.
For related to infrastructure maintenance and housing subdivisions. And the first justifies Hawaii Council for Association of Apartment Owners, Jane Sugimura.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, Chair Mariwaki, Vice Chair, uh, Dela Cruz and, um. Chair. I'm sorry.
Chair Lee is a joint one?
Okay, I'm sorry. Good afternoon, Chairs and Vice Chairs. Uh, you have my written testimony and I'm gonna summarize because there's not a whole lot of time. Um, we support this bill as a temporary measure, but more importantly, I think you gotta look for a long-term solution because the Supreme Court has ruled on this issue that, you know, communities, uh, these, um, housing developments, you know, are responsible, uh, for the care and maintenance of infrastructure that abuts their property. That means roads, uh, streetlights and, you know, and, and, and I understand that this issue's been going on for years. I have been in discussions with the proponent of this bill and I, and I know, I, I know what her frustration is. I have agreed to, you know, I have, uh, offered the services of my organization, the White Council of Association of Apartment Owners. And in my testimony, I suggest that a task group be set up to see if we can do a carve-out into an existing statute, which is chapter four twenty-one J. And I've talked to a community associations institute. They're willing to be on the, the task group, the working group. Uh, John Morris, who's an attorney with over forty years' experience. He was the first condo, uh, specialist for the state of Hawaii. He and I worked on a project in, uh, uh, Kalapana about two years ago where we took an association and we got them organized and, uh, so that they could, you know, it, it, uh, set up an association to collect maintenance fees for the roads and streetlights. So we know it can be done. And there's no, there's no reason for, for, for these, uh, volunteer associations to fight with each other and, you know, spend time in the courts litigating who's, who's the one who's supposed to collect the money to do this work. Uh, and in the meantime, the roads don't get fixed and the streetlights, you know, go into disrepair. I mean, this is just a horrible situation. And so I, I strongly urge that a task group be set up. And also John says that he, uh, John Morris said that he would volunteer his time and join the panel on the task group. He'd be a very valuable resource. And I've talked to Steve Blanstein. He's the, uh, he's head of the Hawaii parliamentarians and they are involved in a lot of these disputes that, you know, to try to resolve them. And he is aware of what's happening on the Big Island in Puna. And he, he, he strongly agrees that something's gotta be done. Otherwise, you know, this is gonna go on forever. And, and it's just very disruptive to everybody.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much for options. Um, I'm gonna, uh, anyone else wishing to testify on? Okay, I've got, um, written testimony from Hawaii Shores Community Association. Eileen O'Hara, County of Hawaii Planning Department, uh, in support and Hawaii Planning Department uh, in opposition, eight individuals in support. Um, members, any questions of the testifiers? Uh, yes, Lorraine.
Senator, yeah. Yeah, Chair, I think, um, you mentioned that county of Hawaii sends, um, in support. I think it says.
This is opposition. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
No, in opposition.
Thank you.
Any questions? Oh, I have one of, um, uh, Jane Sugimura. Um, so you say you are willing to form a working group and help this organization, the association, come up with some way forward on, uh, paying for their maintenance fees.
We're, I, what we're suggesting is to come up with a plan, a recommendation to the legislature to amend existing chapter four twenty-one J. And we'll do a carve-out for these types of volunteer associations, uh, so that, you know, they can, uh, become organized and, uh, uh, you know, become, you know, the official association. Because what I understand is that you've got these housing developments where the developer went in, built houses and roads and streetlights and didn't put anything in the deeds as to who's gonna take care of the roads and the streetlights. And then years later, when the roads are deteriorating, you get various groups who, who, who try to organize associations and, and I, you know, what I'm hearing is that there are competing groups in the same development. And then you have homeowners who don't know who to give their money to. So in effect, you know, they can't collect the money. They end up in court. And, and the Supreme Court, you know, that, that, uh, uh, that, uh, opinion that's in the, you know, preamble of the bill, that's over thirty years old. The Supreme Court has given, you know, direction that says that, you know, if, if you own property and it butts a road and streetlights, then you gotta pay to maintain it. That's just common sense. And you don't need to have something in your deed that says that you have to pay for the cost of that maintenance.
Okay, so, so you will be willing to work on that working?
Yes, and, and, and we, we, we suggest that maybe this bill that you, you know, you authorize an establishment of a working group, that includes people from the county as well as the people that I've told you have, I, I've talked to who will volunteer to be on this panel. And we will come back with written recommendations for the legislature. Uh, I mean, because this is biannual, so this bill could, right, could stay alive for next year. Um, and so we would come back with hopefully a working plan that, you know, everybody can, you know, adopt and, and go forward so that they don't have to deal with this on a going-forward basis.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, okay, um, ouch, thank you very much. So we're moving now into the agenda for transportation and government operations. So you are lead chair, Lee.
All right, thanks. Um, I'll just note we have one, two, three, four.
Excuse me, Chair. I had, I had a question raised.
So, yes. Oh. Oh, sorry, I missed your hand there.
Yeah, yeah, just for Jane, I'll make a chart. Jane Sugimura. Yes, Jane, uh, hi, how are you? Good to see you. You know what then? If you're saying amend the, uh, four twenty-one J, why don't we just do that in this bill? Um, I don't know if, I mean, we can probably. Because it's a, it's a big issue and then I think it's identified, I think, um, it's already identified in a page four, like, you know, uh, identifying four twenty-one J. Can we just add, uh, that or maybe consider doing that? Maybe, maybe the chairs would look at making the amendments already and move it up to the next committee or something. I'm, I'm just wondering because this, I understand, is very important with those subdivisions, particularly on Big Island with those rural subdivisions. Just, it's an idea. Yeah, and if we can, you know, um, you know, maybe for the next committee, we can, you know, come up with language. But, you know, right now, uh, you know, what, um. You're going to judiciary and WAM, so maybe you can, uh, maybe, um, Sharon and, um, you know, Chris can maybe think about coming up with a language and maybe offer something, your committee report or something. I don't know, unless you guys wanna go prolong the thing and have a working group, but that's just a suggestion.
The, the question is of Jane. Jane, do you have language ready to go that can be inserted in a bill like this or do you really need to have a working group or, you know, the group with the country?
I think we need to have a working group because I, I know we, we have language and, you know, one of the things that John Morris was talking about and what he and I did is you get, you know, you, you, you insert language into the, the, uh, into the statute that says any, you know, this voluntary or- organization, if they get twenty-five percent of the homeowners in that subdivision to sign an application, then they can apply. What we, what John and I did is John created some, uh, declaration and bylaws and, and we set up this temp, uh, this voluntary group and they had a board meeting, like, like an organizational meeting. And, and they voted to form this association. And then they had to go out and get fifty percent of the homeowners, and this is in Kalap, uh, Kalapana in Maui. But they had to go out and get fifty percent of the homeowners. And, you know, that took us about six months. You know, basically knocking on doors and getting them to sign. And once we got that list, we took, you know, they adopted the, the declaration and the bylaws. We recorded that. And we formed this association. And, and part of the association, the, the only job that they had was to collect the money to maintain and repair the roads and the streetlights in that subdivision.
Jane, uh, uh, going back to what Senator, you know, we say, can you put, do you need to have language inserted into the law in four twenty-one J now? Or is it premature and you need the working group from that area to then come back with a change to four twenty-one J?
I would prefer that the working group be set up and we have input from the people there because here we are in Oahu. And I, I just feel very uncomfortable coming up with language and then basically forcing it on, so those people without their input. And so I would prefer to have the people who are going to have to live with this, these regulations provide input or at least hear what we're saying and say, oh, yeah, that'll work. You know, that's, they tell us that'll work. We can come up with the language.
Okay, okay, fair, fair enough. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, um, so now it's yours, Chair Lee.
All right, so we have five bills and we have ten minutes. Uh, so, uh, the extent folks will stand on their testimony because we have written testimony, that would be appreciated. Uh, first is SB twenty-four hundred relating to highways, testifying first. Uh, we don't have anybody signed up. But we have DOT in support and Libertarian Party in opposition. Since we have no one to hear from, unless DOT wants to comment. Let's move on to SB twenty-six oh three relating to telecommunications facilities. Uh, we do have the Attorney General.
Uh, good afternoon again, uh, Chairs, Vice Chairs and members of the committee. Marjorie, Deputy Attorney General Marjorie Lau appearing on behalf of the Department of the Attorney General. We provide our comments as contained in our written testimony and we are available for questions.
Thank you. And that's all the, um, Zoom testifiers who have signed up. We also have comments from DOT, Budget and Finance and State Procurement Office. Are there any questions? If not, um, up next is SB twenty-eight oh three uh, relating to climate change, um, testifying, uh, we have the Attorney General again. Uh, we have comments, if you're not with us. Department of Transportation with comments, budget, oh, excuse me, I'm looking at the wrong, the wrong list here. Department of Education, my apologies.
Good afternoon, Chair Lee, Vice Chair. Randy Tanaka, Department of Education, on behalf of Superintendent Hayashi and the Department of Education. We stand by our testimony. We only, uh, suggest that, um, the cost to do this could be substantial to the providers, but we know that we have to march forward on this. It will be a difficult thing to do and an expensive thing to do, but it is the right thing to do as we try to mitigate climate change. So thank you very much for your, your time and standing by for questions. Hello.
All right, thank you. Up next, Public Utilities Commission.
Aloha, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members. On behalf of Chair Griffin, the commission stands on its written comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii State Energy Office uh, in support. Uh, State Procurement Office with comments, uh, City and County of Honolulu, Department of Transportation Services uh, with comments, Hawaiian Electric. Believe you're here just a minute ago.
Good afternoon, Chairs, members of the committee, June Chief Hawaiian Electric. We stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Transportation Association, opposition. Ulupono Initiative.
Good afternoon, Chair Lee, Chair Mariwaki, members of the committees. Mike Munichata on behalf of the Ulupono Initiative will stand on our testimony and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, U S Hydrogen Alliance.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairs Lee and Mariwaki and committee members. My name is Roxanna Beck Mohamady and I'm the founder and executive director of the U S Hydrogen Alliance. The U S Hydrogen Alliance is a nonprofit organization comprised The US Hydrogen Alliance is a nonprofit organization comprised of companies employing hydrogen and fuel cell technologies. Our mission is to educate and advocate for greater adoption of hydrogen and fuel cell technologies in commercial and industrial applications across the US as well as other zero emission technologies. The US Hydrogen Alliance strongly supports SB twenty eight oh three, which ensures that the state of Hawaii benefits from the utilization of zero emission buses. We commend Senator Wakai for identifying that heavy emitting buses that contribute to climate change may actually be upgraded to zero emission technology in the very near term. Zero emission bus technology is commercial today and tens of thousands of uh are operating currently across the globe. SB twenty eight oh three also protects Hawaiians from harmful and carcinogenic criteria pollutants that contribute to poor air quality that exacerbate of pre-existing health conditions in addition to causing detrimental health ailments. For those reasons, we strongly support SB twenty eight oh three, thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Uh, we have Hawaii Hydrogen Alliance in support, Americans for Democratic Action Support, uh, St. Bio Diesel Technologies in opposition, Three Fifty Hawaii in support, Roberts Hawaii in support, Climate Protectors Hawaii in support, and one individual in opposition. Believe that's all the testifiers we have on this measure, are there any questions? If not, all right, thank you, let's move on to the next measure, SB two six seven nine relating to driver's license. Licenses, uh, testifying first is Department of Transportation.
Aloha, Chair, uh, we stand on our submitted written testimony in support, uh, with a small modification. Uh, we do not believe all seventy and over applicants should be requested to present certification of physical and mental com- competence from a doctor, thank you.
Thank you. Up next is the Executive Office on Aging. If you're with us with comments, uh, City and County of Honolulu, Department of Customer Services in support, AARP Hawaii in support. Comments from two individuals and support for, excuse me, three individuals and support from four individuals. Is anyone else wanting to testify in this measure that we missed? If not, are there any questions? All right, if not, let's move on to the last measure, SB three one eight three. Uh, this is relating to digital ID, testifying first is the Department of Transportation.
And. Aloha, Chair, again, uh, we stand on our testimony in support.
Thank you. Uh, Office of Enterprise Technology Services. In support. Um, City and County of Honolulu, Department of Customer Services in support, NEC America. Um, oh, good afternoon.
Aloha, Chair Lee and Moriwaki, thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify, my name is Brent Bonback, I'm representing Corporation of America. We stand by our written testimony, commend the Senate for considering this forward-looking program.
Thank you. Up next, Common Cause Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committees, Sandy Ma for Common Cause Hawaii. We just had some comments and questions regarding SB three one eight three. This deals with um establishing a pilot program for digital identification. Digital identification covers driver's licenses and government issued identification. Um, last uh session, AVR was adopted um and signed into law. AVR covers driver's license and state identification cards. We just don't know how um this digital identification program will be um will interface or interact with AVR. And of course, our National Voter Registration Act of nineteen ninety three requires any motor vehicle driver's licensing transaction to um extend to uh offering uh voter registration opportunities. Thank you very much for allowing us to present this uh question to these committees, thank you, and I'm available for any uh questions, thank you.
Thank you. We have testimony in opposition of the Libertarian Party of Hawaii, one individual and one with comments. That's all the testimony we have. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? If not, are there any questions? If not, all right, that's the end of our agenda. So Chair Moriwaki, did you wanna go back?
Yeah, recess or?
Uh, well, we have three minutes.
Okay, can we, wanna go into decision making? Are you ready?
Uh, yeah, I'm ready if you are.
Sure.
I believe we still have other committee members on, yep, there we go.
Everybody here, okay, um. Uh, the first measure with uh GVO um voting on SB two two nine three, which is the facial recognition system. Chair recommends to pass with amendments and address um the uh collection of facial recognition data, it's clear that uh, the Department of Transportation does not use a facial recognition system, so it's um deleting the language um and replacing it, authorizing the Department of Transportation to use an integrated thermal scanner facial imaging system, which is a system they use. And then add uh any im- image obtained by the system to be deleted within thirty minutes and not shared with any other entity and having a a definition for that uh system. Uh, and and also um adding an appropriation so that system can be maintained and operated uh into the, at least for the next year. Uh, and affecting the effective date uh in section five. So the um.
Wait, sorry, which one was this?
The, pardon me, this is Senate Bill two two nine three relating to facial recognition systems, we're going back to the um.
Oh.
Which, yeah.
Okay, but you know what?
Handle on Tuesday.
Can we add appropriation language to keep the system running in this bill too?
No, that's what I just said.
Oh, okay.
One, one amendment is to add appropriation for the maintenance of the system.
And operation.
And maintenance and operation of the system, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so that's uh the amendment uh that Senator Dela Cruz indicated is also included in the amendments. So the Chair votes aye. Senator Dela Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chang.
Aye.
Uh, is Senator Gabbard excused? And Senator Favela?
Aye.
Thank you for voting aye, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, maybe on transportation, same recommendation.
Okay, Chair's recommendation on SB twenty two ninety three is to pass with amendments, Chair Lee.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye, Senator Decoy.
Aye.
Senator Shima Bukuro.
Aye.
Senator Favela.
Aye.
Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next measure is SB three three two four relating to infrastructure maintenance and housing subdivisions. The Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments um that we will delete the sections uh on on the um county and in cert instead, uh establishing a working group to address maintenance and repair of housing subdivision infrastructures. And uh we will add in the Hawaii Council of Community Associations and the County of Hawaii Planning Department as as a couple of the members of the working group. Uh, and affect the effective date for more discussion. The um Chair votes aye. Uh, Vice Chair Dela Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chang.
Aye.
Uh, Senator Gabbard excuse, Senator Favela.
Aye.
I for voting to um recommend.
Thank you, uh, committee has just, in same recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Chair's recommendation, this is the Committee on Transportation on SB thirty three twenty four is to pass with amendments, with five members present, anyone voting with reservations? Any nay votes? Mister Chair, motion is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to SB twenty four hundred relating to highways. So the allowing agencies to recover funds from those who impact and destroy the highway, our recommendation is to move on to WAM committee as is. Any questions? Not Vice Chair.
Uh, I'm sorry, there was an interruption, okay. Uh, the Committee on Transportation on SB twenty four hundred, that's two four zero zero is the is to pass unamended with five members present on the Committee on Transportation, any voting with reservations, any nay votes. Motion is adopted, Mister Chair.
Believe uh Senator Favela, was that a reservation?
Yeah.
Okay. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Chair, I think you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, okay, uh, Senate Bill twenty four hundred, same recommendation, um, pass unamended. Uh, Chair votes aye, Senator Dela Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Chang.
Aye.
Uh, Senator Gabbard excuse, Senator Favela.
Reservation.
Recommendation adopted, it's three voting.
Thank you. We've got SB twenty six oh three relating to tele- telecommunications facilities, this allows DOT to install and lease telecom facilities. Um, we'd like to move this forward, making a couple amendments to address the AG's concerns. So we'll amend two oh six dash one to include quote activities of a provider of telecommunications telecommunications facility as part of the purpose of the chapter. Secondly, we'll limit highway rights of way above or below highways for telecom purposes only to align with the title of the bill. Third, we'll remove section two, that's two sixty four dash E. And then four, we'll put on a defective date because we know this is a work in progress. And we'll let the discussion carry on. So any questions or comments on that? If not, Vice Chair.
Okay, Chair's recommendation on SB twenty six oh three for the Committee on Transportation, pass with amendments. Uh, anyone voting uh with five members present, any voting with ayes, with reservations?
Reservations?
Uh, any nays? Okay, motion is adopted, Mister Chair.
Thank you.
Same a recommendation for the GVO Committee on SB two six zero three. Um, we have four members present, any voting with reservation, Senator Favela?
Preservations, thank you.
Okay, all, uh, anyone opposition? Okay, four voting, uh, three, four voting aye, measure is adopted.
Thank you, moving on to SB twenty eight oh.
Is he there?
Twenty eight oh three relating to climate change. Um, wanna move this forward, making some amendments. I wanna address Roberts Hawaii concerns and some of the private uh bus folks, we wanna switch the the date from twenty thirty five to twenty forty five. Secondly, add on the defective date, um, cause it didn't seem like everybody in the universe had a chance to weigh in on this one. Uh, but send it on to CPN and WAM for their consideration. Any questions or comments on that? If not, Vice Chair.
Uh, the Committee on Transportation on SB twenty one, twenty eight oh three is to pass with amendments with five members present, any voting with reservations? Any for, any nay votes, motion is adopted with all five members present, thank, and adopted, Mister Chair.
Oh, Chair, you're muted again.
Thank you, we are, uh, so the GVO Committee on SB two eight oh three, same recommendation to pass with amendments. We have four members present, anyone uh in opposition? Anyone with reservations? Okay, with four voting aye, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to SB two six seven nine relating to driver's licenses, we'd like to move this one on as well, making a couple amendments. Uh, first, just to keep it simple, we wanna change, once you hit seventy two, you just gotta renew every four years indefinitely. Um, and then secondly, add on a defective date as this goes on to JDC. Any questions or comments?
Um, yes. Um, Mister Chair, uh, the recommendation on um from DOT with regards to the certification of the mental and whatever they asked, you're still gonna leave that in?
Oh, that's, yeah, we can throw that in as well.
Okay, as part of the amendments?
Right.
Okay, so deleting, uh, recommending the DOT, DOT's um recommendation, okay.
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Uh, then the Committee on Transportation, Chair's recommendation is to pass SB twenty six seventy nine uh to pass with amendments of all five members present, any voting with reservations? Any nay votes? Motion is adopted, Mister Chair.
Thank you.
GVO Committee, same recommendation to pass with amendments for Senate Bill two six seven nine. Uh, four members present, anyone objecting? Anyone with reservations? Measure is adopted.
All right, thanks for the reminder, Vice Chair, I totally missed that that piece. All right, moving on to SB three one eight three relating to digital identification. Uh, we'd like to move this one on as well, uh, making some amendments. Uh, first, wanna take the ETS amendment by deleting section C, prohibiting use for for federal real ID as that is currently being evaluated, evaluated right now by the feds and seems like it could be in place um within a year or so. Uh, secondly, um we wanna ensure that digital renewals pursuant to the section shall provide for automatic voter registration um as Common Cause had mentioned, and then third, just add in a defective date as this goes on to uh WAM JDC. Any questions or comments on any of that? If not, Vice Chair.
Um, thank you, Chair's recommendation on the Committee on Transportation to SB thirty one eighty three is to pass with amendments, uh, with all five members present, any voting with reservations? Any nay votes, motion is adopted, Mister Chair.
Thank you.
GVO Committee, uh, same recommendation to pass with amendment Senate Bill three one eight three. Uh, four members present, anyone voting in opposition? Anyone voting with reservation? Measure is adopted.
All right, thank you. Um, so that concludes our, our marathon joint hearing, um, and then for the, so we'll, we'll gavel out of that, thank you to the GVO Committee. And then we'll gavel back into our three PM agenda and we'll just note for, since we're, we got one minute left. Um, we're gonna defer decision making on the entire agenda um to Tuesday, two fifteen at uh three thirty five.
Hold on, Karen.
Virtually. And with that, thank you, everybody, we are adjourned.